Good evening, welcome to the regular Siri City Council meeting of Monday, March 11th, 2019. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Here.
Councilmember DeRocci.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Vieira.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Pastor Adrian Condit, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm gonna fool you guys tonight, I'm not gonna talk, preach a little sermon before I pray, so pray, okay? It is a privilege of mine to be here, and at my age, it's a privilege to be anywhere, really. But I'm glad to be here tonight, and I pray that God will touch me with us as a great city, amen? Our heavenly Father, we want to bow in your presence this morning, or this afternoon. We want to thank you for this privilege, want to thank you for our council, and all the city workers that serve this city. And I pray that they'll serve with the dedication in their heart to want to make this city the best little city in California, that they'll work toward a common purpose, and that purpose will be the better, this city for the citizens that live here. Bless this council with leadership, bless them, Father, with your love, lead them in all that they do, direct their path in making choices, because we live our choices, and our city, and our citizens will live by the choices that this council makes from time to time. So I pray in the holy name of Jesus our Savior, that they will be wise in their decisions, and our city will grow and prosper. We commit it all to you in that most holy name of Christ Jesus our Lord, amen?
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Condit. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to Citizens Communication to Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I do have some speaker cards, and so as a reminder, when you come up to the podium, the light will go green as you're speaking, when you get down to the, if you go the full five minutes, then when you've hit five minutes, the red light would come on, and I would ask that you conclude your comments at that point. So, the first speaker card I have is Marlon, is it Senna?
Yes, my name is Marlon Senna, I'm representing the Parks Homeowners Association, and I'm here, and also from the board, to thank you, thanks to the council for installing three no dumping signs in front of the property, and a camera. Since that was put up, we have had no dumping. How long that's gonna last, we don't know, but maybe it deterred a few people. So again, we thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dwayne Thompson.
Good evening, Dwayne Thompson, 1197 Alondra Drive. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to say, I was gonna say them at the last meeting, but I didn't get here quite early enough, so this is some stuff I saw in the staff report. One was the Recreation Monthly Report, I wanted to point out something in it, on the spring flyer, it says, "It's important that the activities are known to the public, because parents don't always know what is available in the community center." I wanted to let you know that, as a parent, I'm not aware, I know that kids at school sometimes get something, but, you know, unfortunately, kids don't always bring that stuff home, or if they do, it's too late. So I don't know if it's something that, I know it'd be a cost, but I don't know if it's something the city could consider, some other way of getting that out there. You know, I don't, a mail flyer would obviously be expensive, but I don't know if there's, you know, that's for you guys to figure out, some way to get it out there, because, you know, unless you go online, or unless you get the paper, people don't know what's going on out there. And a lot of people don't go online specifically for the city things, or read the paper, even get the paper for that matter. So anyways, I just want to let you know that a lot of the parents, or at least speaking for myself, don't know about the events going on at the community center. I wanted to read a couple of things, if you just bear with me here, that I found interesting, kind of an out of sight, out of mind, as a business owner, you know, I look at numbers and think about the stuff that the average employee don't. So just bear with me one sec. This is on facility services, completed 103 service requests, repaired IT manager's office, repainted fire chief's office, replaced all city flags, completed a total of 46 customer services, including a bike path, 37 park maintenances, replaced 29 sprinklers, responded to 91 customer service requests, including streetlights and signs repaired of 56, responded to 326 underground service alerts, sprayed 23 storm ponds, and 38 lift stations weeded, cleaned over 23,000 gallons of sewer line, treated and disposed of 76 and a half million gallons of wastewater, replaced 46 water meters. The reason I'm reading that is, you know, as a citizen, we don't see any of that, you know, so it's that out of sight, out of mind, you know, the streetlight, sure, you know, we'll see a streetlight, a stoplight, things like that, but we don't see what all goes on in the city. And it really helps you to recognize that the city is basically a business at the end of the day. And so I wanted to say that, I think you guys do, not just you guys, you folks, but that the city in general does a great job doing these things, because when you think about, I mean, just take the weeds at the parks, for example, imagine what our parks would look like if those things didn't happen on a regular basis. And that's not something we would normally think about, we just go to the park and enjoy the park, end of story, you know? Or we might see them out there mowing the yard, but that's about it. So anyways, I just want to let you know that I do appreciate that, and I'm sure if others thought about it, they too would appreciate that, so good job on that. The last thing that I want to read, and it's ironic, I found it in the Courier, because I was gonna mention it at the last meeting. This is the first time I'd ever seen this, it's Council's Values. The city's seal motto, "Together We Achieve." The city's counsel guidelines, principles are, "Be an approachable council, and members who are involved in the community. Treat people fairly, be proactive, not reactive. Make long-lasting decisions. Foster strong communication with the community. Expect quality development as part of the being a quality community. Foster openness and public engagement. Be friendly in all encounters. Be proud of our small-town atmosphere. Respect the roles of the council." And I wanted to say that I couldn't agree with that more, I think you guys are doing a great job, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have another card here from, and I apologize Jennifer, I get it, if I get it wrong, is it Jennifer, is it Hidalgo? Hidalgo? Okay, great.
Thank you Mayor Vieira, good evening council, my name is Jennifer Hidalgo, and I'm here on behalf of Senator Ana Caballero, so I am here to introduce myself, and just to let you know, I'm interested in collaborating with the city of Siri's, anything you guys might need, please feel free to call our office, our number's 209-726-5495. So also, if you have any constituents that need any help with state matters, please have them give us a call, and again, I don't have business cards yet, but I can go ahead and send you all an email to introduce myself again.
Okay, thank you, we will probably definitely take you up on that, we've been spoiled the last eight years, because the former senator was our former mayor and a Siri's resident, so we're hopeful that we'll get the same, you know, response out of Senator Caballero as we had with Senator Cano.
And I live in Modesto, so I'm right nearby, and so I will be here.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? If so, please come forth and state your name for the record.
My name is Michael Richards, I live at 2417 Pine Ridge Drive, I've lived in Siri's for 35 years, and I'm a member of the San Oslo's County Bicycle Club, and I'm concerned about bicycle and pedestrian safety crossing Whitmore Avenue. I can just, this is, I wrote this to the Siri's Courier 18 months ago. I would like to compliment the city of Siri's on their construction of the network and up bike and walking paths. They are an asset to the city and encourage people to exercise and stay fit. However, my wife and I have a serious concern about the crossing on Whitmore Avenue. We cycle to Houston several mornings a week, we used to cross Whitmore and proceed along the canal path to Roding Road before turning east. However, we've been nearly hit several times by vehicles going over the, from the Mitchell roadside, this is the crossing right by the canal, so now we go by another route. But this first happened, when this first happened, we thought it was from poor driving, that was the reason, but we now realize that drivers heading east from the Mitchell lights along Whitmore Avenue, can't see the flashing lights on the crossing, because there's a slight elevation in the level of the road when it goes over the canal. So you've got two rows of flashing lights, you can see it when you're coming from the Houston side, but going from Mitchell to Houston, there's an elevation where the road goes over the canal, then there's a dip, and then there's the flashing lights are hidden in the dip. So this first, when we first were aware of this, we witnessed a father and two little kids, all on bikes, being terrified by vehicles cutting in front of them as they crossed, tried crossing the road there, because of that, people from, the first people, they were crossing from north to south, so the first people coming from the Houston side stopped, they got halfway across, and then people from the Mitchell side cut right in front of them. I've never seen that father or his little girls there again. So I called someone at City Hall about my concerns, this was in October of 2017, and I said, "This is an accident waiting to happen." Lady I spoke to said she would deal with my concerns, I gave my name, and address, and telephone number, I've heard nothing since. So, and I do know, I've heard that the, last October, one year after I wrote this letter, there were three accidents at that crossing involving cyclists, within a two-week period, and one of them ended up with a guy with a broken leg. So I think, you know, what you really, what we really need to have, for pedestrians and for cyclists, is to have elevated flashing lights on either side, so that everybody's clear about, you know, somebody's crossing, before we get another accident, or worse, or, you know, as a city, we get into trouble. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Wells, is that something you or Daniel?
We're already in design.
Oh, yeah.
That very design is underway, we have a grant funding through the ATP, Alternate Transportation Program, for the Whitmore Avenue pedestrians, basically a sidewalk on the south side of the roadway, as well as that pedestrian crossing. So it will be an elevated sign, that is, we're designing right now, the, how it will best fit, it's a little unique, the way that Moore Road hits Whitmore, but we have issued the contract, the design, in a perfect world, we'd be under construction this summer, but we've got some real work to do to get there, we've, we've got some deadlines with the CTC, California Transportation Commission, to get that approved and the grant funding that we have, but we are designing that very fix.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Dave Prattis, Siri's, yeah, I've been almost run over two, but people come from Houston side, one car stops, one doesn't. I noticed all of a sudden in the canal, I guess people are not dumping so much on the streets now, they're dumping in the canals, somebody's taken a couple of shopping carts and loaded up with garbage and stuff, and shoved them in the canals, along with plastic bags and numerous other items. I gave Chance a card, and I gave Mike, Mike a card, it's, Modesto's got the street team, they hire the homeless, homeless to pick up trash, they don't pay them in cash, but they pay them in other, other stuff. Couple meetings ago, I went to the Modesto Council meeting, and they were talking about adding 180 beds, 180 beds, and all of a sudden, they got to talking about the homeless, and started mentioning about moving the homeless to Siri's. I mentioned to Chance a couple weeks ago about that, that, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Hey Dave.
Dave, I've got a question for you, you're talking about the trash and stuff in the TID canal, have you contacted TID, or have you been to their board meetings?
I had no idea who to contact, I took a picture, I used the Siri's app, and I got a response, said it wasn't the city's responsibility, it was TID's, but I had no idea who to contact.
Well, the TID Board has regular meetings, just like we do here, so I think if you go to the TID website, you can find out when their meetings are and their agenda, and you can bring it to their attention.
All right. I love going to meetings.
Is there anyone else? Okay, that will move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening, conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 16 consent calendar items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature, and will be enacted by a single motion, unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay?
14 and 15. 15.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have an item pulled, other than 14 or 15? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Move to approve, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, AB, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, and 16.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocci.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number 14, Resolution Number 2019-31, approving the purchase of portable and mobile radios for the fire department, and approving a budget amendment. Councilman, or Vice Mayor Rhino?
I have a couple questions. Why do we use the LA County discount for pricing?
It's just like a state contract, basically, it's a negotiated purchase price that satisfied our competitive bid process, so we use that, when we have opportunities, like we do with a lot of other bids, where we look at other options, we buy vehicles, we go off a state list, it's, basically, this is another ability that we have of piggybacking off somebody else's bids, so their prices are already negotiated, which allows us to save some money and save some time by not having to go do our own bid process.
So it was less expensive to do that?
Generally speaking, yes, we always check that, but as indicated in the staff report, there is a savings by utilizing this approach from their market price.
And the new Motorola portable radios will work with the purchase of the police dispatch radio system, that's on the next item on the agenda?
Yes, there's obviously a lot more complexity to that overall system, but the answer is yes.
It will work, okay, that was my only questions.
Okay, all right, any other questions on this item? Is anyone in the audience? Okay, I'll bring it back to council for direction on this item.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-31.
Second. We have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocci.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number 15, Resolution Number 2019-32, authorizing the purchase of a police dispatch radio system, and authorize the finance director to execute a budget amendment. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Well, it definitely looks like we need to update our system, but we're basically gonna piggyback on the same system that the county uses. What happens if the county decides they don't like that system anymore, and they switch, and now we've got the same unit that they had previously?
First of all, we're doing it so we can back up each other, the secondary EOC for the county is upstairs next to dispatch, so our plan is to have our own system, and then we'll be able to back up to SR 911 in case there's any issues here, it's just a backup issue, but...
I understand that, but if that, is that, that's what they're currently using, the same system?
It is, yes, and they just purchased it recently, within the last year, year and a half.
Okay, so my question was, though, if they decide that they don't like that system anymore, what does that do to our system?
Nothing, we're gonna stick with what we have, we can stay with the same radio consoles, we are using the county's communication system, which did save us a lot of money, I could give you an example, Turlock just purchased their own system, Motorola, for 1.8 million, we didn't do that this time, we're sharing what the county has, along with Modesto and other agencies, which, once we get this in place, we can turn off some of our things that are costing us money on annual maintenance for Motorola, so that's...
But we have to pay this new company in annual maintenance, too, don't we?
We have a Delta contract already, so there'll be, there'll be an addition to that, but we're still not paying for what the county, what part of this we're getting from the county, so there are savings moving to this new system.
And it shows that some of the funding comes from the IT internal fund, but under interdepartmental coordination, I don't see that we had any with IT, are they involved in the process of operating it, or anything?
Not operating, but they will obviously be involved in the, making sure everything's working properly.
Because they have to do, what did I read in here, something about the hardware, or the line, and, so we did actually talk to them to make sure that they're okay with it.
Of course, yeah.
And is it, is it normal that when you spend this much money for equipment, that the company that you're buying it for charges you for traveling here to train us, is that a normal thing?
Oh, you don't buy consoles every day, I mean, it's, it's unique to the piece of equipment, in this particular case, the equipment is part of the program, Chief has any more direction on that, it's not unusual, it's not out of, it's not out of place.
My question, though, is, when you spend that amount of money, do companies normally charge you additional money to come and train you on it, with other contracts that we do?
With other contracts, it's kind of six one, half dozen the other, it's either buried in the cost, or as a separate line item, in this case, they just identify the line item, so...
Under the professional services, they show an estimate on their rental car, their estimate on per diem, estimate on airfare, so does that mean, if it winds up being more than that, that we have to come up with another budget transfer?
Well, if there was additional costs, we would probably not hit these particular items, we would either come out of the other purchase costs within the department budget, or we'd have to come back if there was additional cost.
And those are my only questions, thank you.
I would like to comment just one thing, though. We did get, in the past, we have gotten bids for this same replacement through Motorola, and it was $450,000, so we are going with something that is more off the shelf, and cheaper, that's it.
But, but it will do the trick, cheaper, cheaper isn't always better, right?
You're right.
I would say value, it's a better value.
Okay.
Councilmember Condit?
Chief, have we been having trouble with our current system?
Yes.
Okay, can you give some exact, I mean, signal drops, I mean, where are we looking?
We're having signal drops, and that has to do with probably the radio tower and this console system.
Okay.
What we did was, we were partners with Turlock, and this, we've had this equipment since 2000. Now, Turlock's system went down last month, and they had, thank God, we haven't turned this off yet, and we actually had to back them up, but this, this, we're still halfway attached to Turlock, and then we're moving towards, migrating towards the county, so, and getting rid of this old equipment and getting the new stuff, this is the only thing we have left with the drop systems, the drop problems we're having, is these two things here tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to comment on this item?
Chief, are you staying with Motorola, or is this a different brand?
Our mobiles and portables will be Motorola, we like the radio equipment they make, but the backbone system is not, they're very proprietary, so like I say, they're very expensive, and anytime you purchase a backbone with Motorola, they're a great system, but you've gotta, you've gotta pay Motorola prices. And so with that, I think everyone has decided in this county to purchase a system that they can afford, number one, and we're all staying with Motorola equipment in our vehicles.
I hope it's because where I worked at, we had Motorola, and we had nothing but issues with Motorola, but it was the only game in town.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council now for direction.
Move to adopt Resolution Number 2019-32.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit.
Aye.
Councilmember DeRocci.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Vieira.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing, and no new business, we just have two discussion items. Item number 17, Adopt a Park, Mr. Wells?
Thank you Mayor Vieira, this item was brought to council for discussion this evening at the direction of Councilmember Rhino, in December, she had brought this as a suggested topic for consideration at our goal-stating meeting on February 8th. Unfortunately, we ran out of time on February 8th, we were not able to cover this item, so the item this evening is kind of a review of a program that was created several years ago, in 2006, 2007, when the strategic plan was formulated, as Mr. Thompson mentioned this evening, that strategic plan mentions the visions, the goals of the whole community, and out of that was a long list of priority projects, that the city council, at that point in time, prioritized into four tiers of projects, about 25 projects per each tier, and this Adopt a Park program was on a second tier of priorities. At that time, we had kind of a different staffing level in the Parks Department, and as most of the council will recognize, Mr. Limkey and his staff created this program with the idea of really facilitating volunteers to come adopt parks, right-of-ways, other areas that we need either cleanup, or additional help with pulling weeds, that type of thing. So the program was put together in 2007, was, as I understand it, and reading back through the record, was ready to be implemented in 2008, unfortunately, we all know what happened in 2008, 2009, the recession hit, we had a significant reduction in force, lost the staffing here, and the priorities obviously shifted pretty significantly, so the program was never put in place. So I attached it this evening, staff hasn't done any additional updates or anything, we just put the program in there as it was formulated and last put together, and this evening, just looking for direction on, is this something the council's interested in moving forward, you know, we would take the document, update it, take any comments, direction that you may have on the document, and then bring it back for actual action for council consideration. But tonight, looking for, you know, an open dialogue on what program, if you would like this, and where this lives in terms of priorities for staff, and then what other things we might want to consider as part of the program. There was, you know, some details in there about volunteer hours, and tracking those, and some criteria, those are all really optional at this point, you know, we can make this as simple or as complicated as council would like it to be, at this point, it's a discussion item, we look for your direction, and any questions you may have.
Are there any questions, staff?
Is there a cost factor to this?
You know, what I identified, when I was looking at the research, there was, it looked like at the time, this was getting ready to go, it was right around a budget time, and they identified about $2,500 of additional costs associated with some additional pickers, you know, garbage pickup. costs associated with some additional, um, pickers, you know, garbage pickup, um, garbage bags, and, you know, some of that type of thing, more material type costs. Um, you know, it kind of depends on how much volunteers, right? If we get ten volunteers at one park, cost is probably pretty immaterial and really doesn't probably move the needle at all. If we were to get a hundred volunteers at ten parks, you know, there probably is a materials cost associated with that, but I wouldn't expect it to be anything over, you know, a couple thousand dollars over a, a full fiscal year. Uh, another reason to bring it at this point in time is we can budget accordingly, um, based on the next fiscal year, if this is a program the council wants to move forward with.
Is, is the, is Matt and his crew going to be the ones that are overseeing it?
Well, that's a good question. Um, you know, previously, Parks was under a, you know, kind of a different structure. It was all under one, Parks and the maintenance, and now we have it under two. So, we would have to kind of meet internally and figure out who's the best, um, where's the best place for this to be managed from the city's perspective. We didn't go to that level. We didn't want to go create a program without, you know, clear council direction. This is something you want us to, to move forward with.
You know, I, I seriously think it's a great idea, but at the end of the day, I mean, you know, Series, Love Series kind of evaporated in one way, and I remember when we would do Love Series, we'd have a hundred people, maybe, give or take. Um, you know, and, and, and again, I, I almost sit there and think that we also start with the schools. The schools are right next to the parks, and those kids are the ones, again, as we heard in our workshop, that, you know, they're the ones busting the sprinklers or, or whatever the case is. Um, I, I just, you know, how many parks do we have?
Uh, thirteen, yeah. I was going to guess, but thirteen.
We have like eighteen elementary schools, so that wouldn't be bad, but...
Pretty good ratio.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have.
Councilmember Klein?
How will this affect our contract services? We have contract services with Howard Training Center, uh, to take care of some of our mediums, our parks and things like that. And the second part of the question, uh, I see on here it says sports fields. So, what does that do and how's it going to affect our in lieu of fees like we have with CYB for cost of fields?
We wouldn't anticipate it affecting those contracts. We see these volunteer efforts to be supplemental to those activities, not taking the place of it. So, we'd be more focused on the things that aren't being done currently, like the garbage pickup and, you know, uh, those type of things. Obviously, you, we need to work with those contracts to, to ensure that we weren't, uh, you know, subbing out their, their work, but it'd be on a, basically a park-by-park basis.
So, and, and I apologize for this. If, if Councilmember Dorset said it, but my next question is, would we be coordinating this with city staff? So, let's say we have an Adopt a Park and we have ten volunteers, would a city staff person be there to help coordinate it, or would it be like a free-for-all where the ten volunteers would go out or one volunteer would go out at their, at their own leisure and take care of it? I mean, you know, how would this, how would this take place?
It's a wide-open program. It can have as little or as much oversight as the council would like us to have. Obviously, the more staff oversight, the more, you know, cost and, um, you know, the more challenging it is for our staff to implement a program. So, um, that's, that's the, the challenge of implementing something like this. The more structure we put in place, you know, the more, um, requirements it has for staff.
But wouldn't it have a bigger impact if we had some kind of structure put in place?
That's what we're asking for.
So, well, I'm making that comment.
Yeah, the, the more oversight of city staff, the more cost in terms of staff time that is. That's the...
Vice Mayor Rhino?
When I brought this up, it was really, I think, more out of frustration that I found myself and my husband going and cleaning up a park and pulling weeds because we didn't have staff time. We didn't have staff at the time that could do it. And I think that there are a lot of people in Series who would jump on the opportunity to go out and clean up their neighborhood park, and I don't think it would be a free-for-all. I think if the volunteers just went out there, I mean, my husband and I did, and we didn't go crazy and do anything. I, I, I think what we could do, though, is you have a program where you do like an orientation and then so you don't have to involve staff time, which is kind of the idea, is that freeing up some staff time because they can't hit all of the parks. But they go through an orientation, and then it's a volunteer program, and they commit to, say, once a month at whatever park they've decided to adopt, and they go out, whether it be six in the morning or six o'clock at night, and they, you know, either they're going to pull weeds or they're going to, basically, probably pull weeds. But I think if you put too many restrictions on them, then it kind of loses the, the desire to volunteer. But I, I, I think there are a lot of people that would want to volunteer in one of their parks. But with that said, I looked at the requirements from when they had suggested it before, and definitely, I don't think we need to have them or anyone clean up graffiti because we have a really good graffiti guy right now that goes out and takes care of it. And I think that we could, if it was agreed, that they go through orientation, they get their certain equipment, whether it be a safety vest, their bags, their little garbage picker-uppers or whatever, and then they commit, and we don't have to keep track of their hours. We're going to assume that they truly do want to adopt, and maybe we do, like the city of Oakdale has done, and they have, one of the downtown mediums that I saw, it was a sign in the median, and it says it was adopted by such-and-such a family. And I think that instills pride in people too, knowing that when people go and go to this park, they can go, wow, look at how wonderful it looks, and look who we can thank for doing that. Those are my opinions.
Councilmember Klein?
So, listen to Vice Mayor. So, my question is, would you, are you looking for somebody to say Adopt a Park and have a, a lead person on a park? Or let's, let's just pick on Rhino Park?
Okay.
So, you would have Linda and Sam Rhino as the chairperson, and you would coordinate for that park? And you would be the lead in trying to get the people there to volunteer? Or would you just put it out there to any volunteer and then they go over there?
Well, I think you would, oh, I would think you would just kind of open it to the, the citizens and say that we're going to start this program. Is there, there, there might be a Boy Scout troop or a Girl Scout troop that would like to do something like that, and they can say, you know what, we'd like to adopt this park, and we're willing to do it for a year. It does, I don't think there has to be a lead because then again, it becomes too, maybe it's too rigid because there might be, like I said, a Boy or Girl Scout or a soccer team or something that wants to do it. So, just have them meet for the orientation and let them go out there and take care of it. I, I don't think that we need to have leads for each park. Because at the end of the day, if we do this and there's one park that no one has adopted, I think we probably will just give it to Councilmember Klein.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just asking because, you know, I mean, there's, there's in, in the works or it's, it's been on the thing for, you know, Alliance Park. So, the Lions Club would, and I'm not, I'm just throwing this out there, could have the potential of, of adopting the park, and then the Lions Club would be the one putting together a workday on it. And that's what I'm asking, because if you go Adopt a Park and you get ten volunteers and nobody knows when to show up, then nobody shows up. So, what good is Adopt a Park if nobody shows up?
Well, I, I think, though, that if we have, and the open period for when people can apply, and then Parks or whoever is going to be running it has their orientation day, if the people that have all applied for, they show up and they can say, well, twelve of us want to do this particular park, probably going to be Rhino Park because it is really nice. But, um, they want, want to do that, then at that time, they could, at the orientation, say, okay, on the first Saturday of the month, we're all going to meet.
Okay.
And, and again, it, it's just really a trial, and if it does cost us, say, two thousand dollars to purchase this equipment that's going to be checked out to them, at the end of the day, two thousand dollars is certainly much more, is, is much cheaper than trying to find the staff that can go out there and do it because we still are understaffed in the Parks Department.
So, might I make a suggestion that we maybe have Matt start with the initial, and then when he has that first meeting, then if there's somebody that stands up that wants to take leadership role, that they can?
Well, I think the city manager wanted to look at his staffing and see if it was going to be Parks or if it was going to be Matt.
Hearing, hearing the discussion, um, you know, obviously, there's more input, but, you know, I, I think from kind of gleaning that conversation, I would suggest we do somewhat of a, call it a pilot program or something along those lines where we try it for a year and under a simpler format rather than, you know, it's just twenty pages of a little more, I mean, we can boil this down into a little more, um, call it user-friendly, a little, little simpler. Try that for a year before we go to a more formalized project, see what kind of, um, bugs, you know, we identify, what kind of challenges, and that might be a little easier, a little more manageable, at least for staff, to kind of see how much interest is it. Like I said, if there's ten volunteers who are really dedicated, you know, that's a little easier to get your arms around, but if there's a hundred, you know, it might be a little more challenging and a little more stress on staff, or we might need a little more structure. So, I, I think with some experience, we might have a better feel for, you know, how much structure we need to put in place so that it is sustainable. That's what, you know, ultimately, if we're going to put this together, we want it to, to last and people to grab some ownership of the overall concept.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Rhino?
But we would also need to do some type of marketing to be sure we get it out there. And, and instead of just talking here, we, we, we need to put something out there so we can get people interested in it.
Of course.
So, is that the direction that everybody's good with?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Raising money is fun. Okay, so, I kind of walked in late. I apologize for that. Always getting off work at this time, so it's really hard for me to actually get here sometimes right when it starts, but I'm halfway in. How much money do you guys need to do? It sounds like you're trying to adopt a park.
To start the program, we don't need any money. Uh, this is, the idea is trying to figure out whether we have the volunteers and what kind of structure the city wants to put in place to, to do it. Ultimately, if it's successful, it's only a couple thousand dollars a year that would likely be necessary to support this effort.
And you need volunteers to do what?
General cleanup in the parks.
And you need to get the word out?
Correct.
And that costs money too, right?
Depending on how we do it.
If you like do flyers or radio or TV or whatever, right?
Correct.
I have all those resources. You get it for free. You don't have to pay a dime.
Fantastic.
That's, that's what, that's what I do. I, I get out to the people. So, I have a business. I have equipment. I have the means to put banners on the side of my equipment. Um, it's always up and down the streets. I come and go all day long. I'm up and down from Stockton to the LA to the Bay Area. I'm everywhere. And I have three trucks doing the same thing. That is a lot of viewers for nothing. I would like to help. I just need to know how. And if you guys need volunteers, we'll get volunteers. I, I'm part of, uh, SEIU UHW, the United Healthcare Workers. My wife works for Kaiser. Uh, I'm a newly-elected delegate. My wife is a delegate. We have access to a lot of people, so this, we canvas neighborhoods. That's what we do. So, if you guys need help, if you want to get the, the, the community involved, more than willing to help. No cost. Because I feel like I should scratch Series back because I need mine scratched too. And, and it helps. I mean, if, if, if anybody wants me to stop talking, I'm, I'm happy to sit down. Um, it's not a problem, anybody. I, you know, I just want to make sure I'm not taking up everyone's time because, you know, I feel like this is, this is what we need. And, and another thing, um, I've talked to you guys about parking. You said no.
They tell me what to do.
I, I understand that, but you said no. Everybody else listened. You, I don't think you were here that night. But the ideas that I have will raise a lot of money for Series. A lot of money. You have people around here hurting. Their businesses are hurting because we have no parking. We have no parking. I, I drive around Series all day long, and I see a whole lot of parking, and it says nothing over three tons or six tons or whatever the city statute is, but way more than what we have, way less than what we have, so we can't park. But there's a lot of parks that cars are not using. I have a, a veteran, uh, that lives catty-corner from where I live. Old guy on a fixed income, just bought a RV, didn't realize he was going to have to pay to park it. He had it out in front of his house. We loved it. It wasn't no problem, but police come by, slap a sticker on it, got to move it. Now he has to pay to store it, and he's on a fixed income. So, that hurts. Parking permits raise money for the city. Have people pay for parking. That way, you're not letting the general public park there, but the people that live there have big vehicles. They have boats. They have RVs. They have stuff that's not even going to get in the way. And they get tags slapped on them, and now they have to pay. That's money out of their pockets. Win-win. Charge them to park where they live so they can keep their eye on their equipment. Plus, it's a lot cheaper, and Series raises money all year long. That's, that makes sense to me. And I, I don't understand why, you know, I, I have an F three fifty with a forty-foot flatbed, and it sat out in front of my house for, I don't know, three months. I mean, I move it. I work with it. I come back home. And then just the other day, tag. Got to go. So, to keep it off the street, put it in my driveway. Now, my cars are out on the street instead of in the driveway. Either way, the park, the, 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 the parking is taken up. So, I'm just coming up with ideas, trying to help, see if I can get some help, and, uh, you know, I, if, if you guys need to raise money, I'm your man. Mayor Vera, I'm your man. Marketing, free. Labor, free. And I'm going to sit down.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I don't know if you know it or not, but there's an, an app, um, called Next Door. They also have a website, and you can go on that, um, and notify people what it is you're looking to do, um, you know, for the Adopt a Park thing. So, that is something that you guys, uh, could look into.
Anyone else like to speak on this item?
Just quickly, um, I would like to check with our Risk Management Association in regards to how to address, um, volun- how the best way to address volunteers to make sure that we don't expose ourselves too much, because if we have volunteers out in the park, if they get hurt, so I want to make sure we can deal with that appropriately.
Okay. Okay, so you have the direction you need?
Yes, we would, uh, deal with, you know, the concept and comments you brought this evening. Um, we'd come back and work with, you know, internal staff, figure out where the best, uh, program for this and address, you know, obviously, the, uh, the old document needs some, some cleanup. There's, you know, a few things to clean up, and then obviously address, you know, an agreement, you know, basically, we need someone to sign a waiver, that type of thing. Our RMA would be obviously instrumental in making sure that passes legal muster that will protect ourselves. You know, last thing we would do is create, you know, any undue liability. So, we'll make sure we address those issues and bring it back to council for action.
Okay. All right, now we'll move to item number eighteen, Beautification, Beautification Action Committee. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. A similar vein of this discussion, um, at the goal-setting meeting on February eighth, Councilmember Condit, um, raised the, the question about the Beautification Committee, um, and asked it to be covered since we didn't get there, uh, at February eighth. So, um, Councilmember Condit had, uh, formulated the concept that is included in the staff report, uh, with the idea of the committee being made up of two citizens from each district. Uh, each council member appointing two, two members. The mayor appoint two at large, um, citizens serving a two-year term. Council would have the option to reappoint, uh, or appoint a new member, uh, to the committee. Uh, the committee would then, would be once every two months, publicly...
or appoint a new member to the committee, the committee would then, would be once every two months, publicly invited to attend the regular meetings, city's code enforcement would attend the meetings, code enforcement will be involved and active on the committee, committee would allow for more communication between citizens and our code enforcement division to work closely together to combat blight across the city. This committee can also focus, coordinate volunteer programs that we just talked about with the Adopt a Park and/or Love Siri's, and the committee would give a report to council once every two months, and that was the, the rough outline that Councilmember Condit had communicated to me, so put that in the staff report. This, if Councilmember Condit wants to add any additional, again, this is discussion item, looking for direction from council, if this is something we'd like to pursue and where this fits in the overall kind of work, work program priorities.
Okay, Councilmember Condit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, this was a topic that we discussed in our goal-setting meeting, and I know it, it was met with a good reception, and I, I do know that our number one complaint, just meeting and talking with folks, and especially at my office hours, is blight. And our speakers who routinely speak here on our council meeting is blight, and also communication with code enforcement, so I think this committee would give the citizens an opportunity to regularly meet with code enforcement and to come up with a strategic plan to combat blight across the city. So, I hope my colleagues can support it, thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Klein?
So, so my questions are, in reading this thing, basically they would be citizen volunteers to report code enforcement violations?
I, I want you to think more Measure H. It's more of a Measure H-S type of committee, and we as a council, we would appoint two per district, so there'd be ten total with the mayor appointing at large, and they would meet here or somewhere, other, another place that was sanctioned, and code enforcement would be required to attend those meetings and and then they can come up with ideas and solutions on how to combat blight.
So, this committee would be mostly like a Measure H committee?
Type, yes.
Type?
Yes.
So they're not actually doing beautification in the city, they're just a committee to discuss beautification and report code enforcement blithin, issues?
Well, well, as it says at the bottom, they can also come up with projects such as Love Siri's or Adopt a Park and come up with a strategic plan, like they can, one meeting, they can talk about a plan to go and adopt Rhino Park and clean it up, and that's, actually it could be a platform to get volunteers for projects like that. I mean, you would start out with a ten volunteer group just based on this committee, you'd get ten people who are invested, who are appointed by their council member, and they would have some skin in the game and wanting to get out there and clean up the city.
And, and please don't take this the wrong way, Councilmember Condit, but I, I think this is going in the right direction, but there's just a few concerns I have, like my one concern is a, a ten, ten-member committee, with that many people, it's trying to get something accomplished without a lot of, how would you say it? Lack of better words, a lot of disagreements going too many different ways, you know, I, but I, I think this is a, a good step in the right direction.
Sure.
And, and trying to do it, the other concern I have is, is, you know, it would be more into code enforcement than it would be public safety as far as fear, fire and police, you know, because we're trying to clean it up, so it would be more geared in towards code enforcement?
Yes, that's why they would be at the meetings.
Right, so I think it's a step in the right direction, I know that there's probably two or three people in the audience right now that would volunteer for this community, uh, this committee. Okay? I just would like to have a little bit more, you know, insider direction as far as parameters, you know? Because, you know, again, our code enforcement, most of it's done on, on people calling in.
Exactly.
They just don't go around and patrol, so I think this would be an ad, an added thing, but I would like to see a little bit more structure of what we're talking about. So, when this committee comes together, that there's not a bunch of, bunch of different directions. You know, I've heard a lot of good things about Measure H committee, I've never sat on one, but I've heard a lot of bad things about Measure H, because the things I've heard is they start talking about Measure H and spending the money for public safety and doing things, and then all of a sudden they go out on a tangent about how the city is blithed and how this is this, and we're doing things wrong, and they're discussing things different than what they're supposed to be discussing.
Sure, well, I do think that committees should have an agenda and some sort of structure to it. And I, I, I do think that everyone who is appointed will have one common thing in mind, and that is cleaning up Siri's.
So, but this is completely different than Adopt a Park.
Uh, it is completely different in that sense, but it could be a platform to organize an Adopt a Park. Does, do you understand that?
I understand that, but I don't know how you're gonna get it to that point. That's why I'm looking for a little more structure of how we're gonna, you know, how we're gonna get to that direction.
If us as a council, if we approve this, we would, each member would appoint two people from our district, with the mayor appointing two at large. They would have regular meetings once every two months, code enforcement would be required to attend, they would have an agenda, they would go over the agenda and what they would plan on attacking for that month, they would then work with code enforcement to clean up illegal dumpings or blight or shopping carts and canals or so on and so on. Many complaints that we've heard this evening. Or, and, they can come up with a park that they would like to sponsor, Smyrna Park or Rhino Park or so on, for the following month, and then they can try to organize volunteers around that project.
So, and, and I didn't see it, see it in this staff report, but would there be one specific person that is a city employee that would be the oversight on this committee? Whether it be, you know, Chief Smith, Captain Collins, I mean, would there be somebody that would be a, a lead for the city on this?
I, I would like to possibly see our Recreations Manager taking the lead as well in partnership with code enforcement.
And then I would assume that once this committee's put together, they would have a chairperson, a co-chairperson?
Exactly.
To lead the meeting, but we, but that's what I'm asking is, so you're, you're looking for our recreation manager to be the city lead on this?
And our code enforcement officer, yes. A collaboration between our, our recreation manager and our code enforcement department, so that at the end of each meeting, they can give direction on sites such as Moffett Road, the legal dumpings taking place over there, that they would give direction so that we can carry out these sites being properly cleaned up, or they would give direction on Mr. Lord trying to help coordinate a park that, that we mentioned that he will possibly be doing for Adopt a Park, things like that. So, I, I just think the committee will give better accessibility for our citizens and better communication between them and code enforcement, because that is the number one complaint every meeting that I've been to and that I've seen, so.
Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
But if we require code enforcement to be at this meeting for a couple of hours, aren't we basically then taking code enforcement away from what they should be doing, being out in the city cleaning up?
Well, I would, I would suspect that the meeting would probably take place in the evening or such as Measure H, some sort of timeframe like that, where there would be coordinated with code enforcement so that they could be there.
But then we would pay them overtime to attend a committee meeting.
Well, that is something to consider, but I do think the committee loses its value if code enforcement is not there.
Well, back to...
And I would be open for suggestions as well if there is during the day, during the workday, I just know that most people's availability is during the evening time.
That's correct. What happens, you, you suggested that two citizens from each councilman, from each council member be appointed, but what if we reach out to our districts and we don't have two people who want to do that, what happens then? And then my other, my other concern with that would be, are we, instead of bringing the city together, are we kind of going to divide it because we're gonna have these two committee members that want to focus something in their district, but then these two want to focus on something in their district, so should it be more of a committee members from the city, not from the community, not necessarily from each district?
Well, community members are more than welcome, it's an open meeting, community members are more than welcome to give their input just like any other meeting. But I know for certain you would have two members who you could appoint, two who are probably here tonight, Mr. Yeekley and Mr. Thompson, I'm sure they would be more willing to be on something like this. So I, I don't think that, just because I know how much people are engaged on blight and cleaning up the city, it is the number one complaint. I don't think we would have any shortcomings in finding people who'd be willing to be a part of this. But it is a public meeting, it will be a public setting, people can come, give public comment, give suggestions, and after their two years is served, we can reappoint them or appoint new citizens who might want to be involved. It's about getting people involved.
I, I, and I totally agree with you on that, I still have an issue though requiring code enforcement to attend, and I know that code enforcement will, because it's blight, would, would play a significant part in it, but then that takes me back to another suggestion I had made that we do a day where we do a code enforcement roundup and we invite the community to come and hear what code enforcement does and what you need to do and, you know, all the different programs that you can take advantage of so you don't get yourself into a blight situation. And then code enforcement does, they target, whether it's, we get a lot of complaints on garbage cans being left out front or signs, they target the city and our two and a half code enforcement officers go out and they just swoop in and they take care of it, I mean, would that be more effective to do kind of a roundup like that instead of a committee that...
I think you'll get people hit and it'll be a hit and miss on your roundup, I really do, I think this will get people involved and committed, it'll give some, some people something to rally behind, I really do. I think it will, it will give some purpose to cleaning up the city and it'll make it feel like people are being heard directly by the code enforcement, and this, more accessibility and communication, I can't reiterate that enough. So, and it's not, you know, I know we have a website, but some folks get frustrated using that website, frankly, so it would be, it, it just goes a little extra mile of having that face-to-face contact and knowing that they are being directly heard and, and that the, the issues will be met, so.
Then how, how would you address the issue of overtime for code enforcement?
I think that's something that we can further discuss and how that we can possibly accommodate that so that there isn't much overtime, if at all. So I, I do think that is something that we can work together and trying to find a solution to, and maybe the public has a solution to that, but I do think that this committee is, is the right direction in getting people involved in cleaning up their city.
Okay.
Councilmember Drossel?
I hate to restate everything that's been said, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Klein in regards to ten people being on, on a committee, it, it's gonna have major issues, I know when we did the TOT, we had like four of us or five of us on that specific committee, and again, the committee eventually died itself out because it needed to, because there was no other need for that. You know, city staff, what I see is this, and, and, and I love the energy and the enthusiasm and, and what you're trying to do, totally cool, I get it. But, you know, we had the, there was a centennial, centennial committee, there was, obviously the TOT, there's a Whitmore Mansion Committee that Mr. Klein and myself have to be on. There's a lot of different committees out there, and what I do this because coming from the business of education, people meet just to meet, and, and what is the, the purpose of the meeting, I understand what you're trying to do, but at the same time, what is our city staff doing? You know, I mean, all day long, somebody calls and says, hey, there's a, there's a dump over here on a, on a, on a Friday, there's blight, there's garbage, it's, it's ugly, right? Well, a lot of people don't know that we already got that phone call and it's gonna be picked up not until Tuesday because that's the only day that they pick them up, it's the only day they do big bundle stuff when, when there's a dump, right? And, and again, that's, that's from Bertolati. Having the parks guy do it in, in regards to, and the code enforcement, we're talking not just overtime, but also what other hands are being tied by city staff. Because again, we have the Measure H that they have to meet, and Tom, you attend several meetings, don't you, and then we have the police guy, police chief attends the meetings as well. And, and again, code enforcement, you know, his job's gonna be out there to be on the road and, and, and try to get after it. The accessibility is right here, is, is everybody can come to this meeting and say, listen, we have this problem, we have this graffiti issue, we have, the parks are ugly, these are things that we have to try to get taken care of, but at the end of the day, it's kind of like, I would like to see if this is the direction that maybe we're thinking of going, we really shorten that down, and we shorten the amount of staff time that's gonna be pulled away from doing other stuff around.
Sure, I, I, I am completely open to that, I, I think that ten is a fine number, I just think it, it gives more inclusiveness, gives more opportunity for folks to get involved. There's a lot of people here tonight who want to get involved and, but I, I don't think that the, the current status quo is working as far as combating blight, obviously we are going to get another code enforcement officer, and that's great, but this, I do think we have a communication problem, just speaking to regular folks and folks who do come and visit me on my office hours, they have a hard time, especially operating that, that website, and this would give them that face-to-face satisfaction that they know that their, their problem is being addressed, that way when they do contact us a couple weeks down, down the line, even though it had been taken care of like you said, they know that when they give that problem at this committee, that it is gonna be taken care of, and it's gonna be taken care of in time of the matter like it has been, so. That's the, that's the point of the committee, and I just think it encourages people to get, get involved, civil engagement, so I think that's what we should be about.
Councilmember Klein?
Now, I, I mean, like I said, I, you know, I can support this with a little bit more clarification, I want to go back to code enforcement. Okay, when you say code enforcement present, are you talking about the code enforcement officers, are you talking about their supervisors? Or are you talking about the director, you know, when I, when I say that, because code enforcement re, re, reports to PD, so are you talking about?
I, I would have, I would have flexibility in that, but I do believe that a code enforcement officer or someone who actually is out doing the day-to-day work, who actually knows these sites, who, who is familiar with the territory, and who's also probably familiar with the citizens who are contacting them. I do think that it, without a code enforcement officer at the committee, it pretty much loses its teeth, it loses the point, so.
Well, and I, and I, that's why I'm asking for clarification, because ultimately, if you have a code enforcement officer there, he doesn't, he doesn't answer or report and do what the citizens dictate, he's still gotta go back to his superior and say, this is what came out of the meeting, these are the things we need to take care of, and that person is the one who sets his agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, sets his agenda and sets, sets what priorities there are and things like that, so ultimately, that's the direction it would go back to, that's why I'm asking.
Well, sure, but we are a complaint-driven code enforcement department, are we not?
Right, right.
Most of these complaints would probably come from the committee and from the citizens who are on that committee, and the citizens on that committee could give a better strategy or, or maybe give solutions, or they might even volunteer to help clean up and combat blight, but, but I'm, I'm open to the details, I'm pretty flexible on it, I just think we need to get, try to, try harder to get our citizens involved and, and clean up our city, I mean, that, I think that's something we all can agree on.
Well, and, and, and I, and I've taken it from what we've done at this council, and, you know, the mayor hasn't weighed in on it yet, but, you know, four of us, I think, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, are in agreement with, with the type of direction, but we also want a little more teeth or a little more understanding of the direction, more like an agenda of what you're looking for, okay? That's, that's what I'm looking for, because like I say, to me, ultimately, I can call code enforcement and tell him what I want done, but he doesn't answer to me, he doesn't answer directly to citizens, he would have to go back to his supervisor and say, hey, listen, this is what we're gonna do. Because I'm in agreement with you, I could probably name four people out in this audience right now that would love to be on this committee, okay? And couple of them are, because they, they're waiting for us to go, to go over, you know, all of our, can't even think of it right off the top of my head now. We've been bugging Mr. Wells about it for a while, but...
Bulky Adam?
What?
The Bulky Adam pickup?
No, it's the codes.
Oh.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
Muni codes and stuff like that, so I, I, I do, I think all, there's four of us that are in agreement with, with Councilmember Condit on, on the Beautification Committee discussion, but I just want a little more direction, a little more... But I just want a little more direction, a little more teeth, and a little bit more of an agenda of what you're looking for.
Sure, and I, I think this is just giving staff direction to move forward in establishing something like that. But I do think that code enforcement, the department has, it plays a major aspect in it. And, but, yeah, I, I appreciate your support.
And I would agree with Councilmember Klein.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, at this time, I'll open up for the audience. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
Dave Prattiseries, if you're looking for me to be a leader, forget it. Nobody follows me anyways. But what you're talking about, that, that people in the neighborhoods going around with a bucket and pickup tool, picking up loose trash and stuff, that are, if they see a big pile of stuff, they're gonna call the city, and the city's gonna come pick out, pick that up. You know, it's a lot more, these people have nothing better to do than drive it around till they figure nobody's watching, so they dump this stuff everywhere. As far, as far as the committees, committee goes, I find not, yeah, like I said, they all seem to wanna go their own different directions, directions without a leader. And, and basically, neighborhoods, you gotta have some kind of leadership, decide whether or not you can go out there. We, our legion group, we pick up the, up the highway, but it depends on the weather and all kinds of other stuff. We used to start, used to start out with a group. Now, we're lucky if there's three of us to get out there to pick, to pick up. After a while, they'd jump on the bandwagon for a while, then they get tired, and they got other things. The kids got ballgames, or whatever, whatever, and then you're down to maybe one or two people getting out there, just like Linda and her husband get out there once in a while, once in a while around... So that's just a thought on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I do agree with some of what this gentleman just said. And I do understand Councilman Dorset's concerns. At the same time, I, I do agree with the direction that Councilmember Condit's wanting to go. I, I do feel personally that it is something that, like you said, should be discussed, at least. You know, look at different avenues, things like that. Because he's, he's right, that, you know, a lot of people might join in, and in time, you know? They just seem to not follow through. And I, I can appreciate the issue Vice Mayor Rhino said about the time for the code enforcement, taking away from duties or payroll and things like that. So the only thing I, I guess what I'm really saying is, is please don't drop the subject. Just take some time and, and evaluate it still further. Thank you.
I'm a solutions man. Here I go again. I am with Councilman Condit, because inclusion helps. And there are those of us in this city that own equipment that can move bulky items. I have a forty-foot flatbed with an eighteen-thousand-pound winch. You got something bulky to move, I'll come get it. It's right here in Series. Ain't gonna take me but a little bit of time to go grab it and take it over to Bertolati, or wherever it needs to go. Breathe. I'll volunteer. I don't have a problem with that. There are, there are a lot of truck drivers, back to the truck driver thing again. It doesn't go away, because we mean so much to everybody, but everybody, we're invisible. We take care of the police, we take care of the fire department, we take care of everybody. Because without us, it all comes to a stop. No fuel, no belts, no toothpicks, no running to Walmart, no gap, no, no, no nothing. You go to the parts store, if we don't show up, it's not gonna be there. So you have an endless amount of volunteers that will help come move items. Not next Thursday, when they call, somebody will be there within the hour, or two hours, or a day. Because you have so many volunteers around the city that'll come grab it and take it where it needs to go. Because we need parking. And then code enforcement, as far as the overtime, why limit it to... Okay, we're, we're gonna cut it down to as little overtime as possible. Give them all overtime they can handle, if they wanna make the money. Because we'll help keep the city clean at almost no cost. Plus, the city will be making money off of us. We just need somewhere to go. Charge us, we'll pay to park. That's extra money for the police, that's extra money for the fire department, that's extra money for code enforcement. You name it. It's an idea, and, and you have a lot of businesses around here that own equipment. There's so many businesses up and down the street that I live on. People got work vans, work trucks, pickups, all the way up to the big rigs. Plenty of people that, that would love to pay to park and help the city stay clean, and give us what we need also. So I'm with you, Condit, all the way.
Lee Brant in Series. Chance is the newest council member, and he has come up with a good idea. I don't wanna see it dropped. I think it's a great idea. You gotta have a place to start. I mean, I understand, you know, everybody's sitting there, you know, they have their own arguments, you know? Linda, as far as the overtime for the code enforcement officer, change his hours that day. There's always, there's something in every contract, it's other duties as assigned. You know, and you could just change the hours for, you know, you have a set meeting, you know, on a Tuesday, whatever. That day, you haven't come in and worked twelve to eight, you know, or whatever, you know, however that works out. That way, you can avoid paying the overtime. I just don't want, I think this is a great idea. I think it's fantastic, you know, and it's about time. The city has done a remarkable job. It's very, very clean, you know? I mean, I remember saying, you know, six months ago, I was very sad when I came back. You know, I, I was upset that I came home. Okay, well, Series is home. You know, I was upset as soon as I came down and hit the valley and saw ninety-nine. The majority of the blight that goes on around here is on Highway ninety-nine, and I understand that's not us. You know, it's Caltrans. And Chance and I, you know, we, we go to the Caltrans site. We show them where their, their homeless sites are. Takes six months, but it did get done. They got cleaned up, you know? But the thing of it is, is, is this with, with what Chance is proposing, is something that can be done. And I think you will find interest, you know? Just, you know, the, the neighborhood, Linda, I understand what you're saying about, you know, you put one, one neighborhood against another, you know? I'm not sure about that, you know, about getting, making sure you have two people from each district. You know, maybe open it up, you know, see what happens. You know, start, start somewhere. So, okay, I'm done. Are you gonna yell at me, Linda?
Not at all, not in front of people.
Okay, thank you.
Or anyone else?
John Warren Series. I think this is a really, really good idea. But I can understand the concerns about a ten-person committee, because things can get off on tangents, and sometimes the goal is not accomplished. So as a thought, it could be reduced down to a five-person committee. One person from each district. With code enforcement being involved, I think it's a necessary item, because let's face this, that's what we're going to become, is eyes and ears of code enforcement. Not that they don't need any more than they already have. But with them being there, and whether it's their supervisor, or if it's a, it's an actual employee, Mike's right, they have to go back and get some type of direction from their, from their leaders, their supervisors. But the committee with overtime, we're talking about one meeting every other month. That's six meetings in a year. And if a meeting is two hours, we're dealing with twelve hours. That's one hour a month of overtime. And I don't think one hour a month of overtime would break the bank, okay? And maybe it's possible to adjust the work hours, so they even show up during regular work hours. It's, it's something that the city really needs to address, and I think move forward on. Even if it just given it one-year trial, let's try it for a year and see how it works out. We're talking about six meetings, maybe five people involved, plus some city employees giving some direction, and, and, and future planning. So I think you should all give it some consideration.
And what else? Okay, Vice Mayor Rhino?
Again, I agree with the concept of the beautification committee, but like Councilmember Klein stated, I think that we, we need to kind of break it down and have it more in a manageable, or at least know what we're really going to be doing. And I think what makes me see the value is, I compare it to a neighborhood watch, except they're not going to be, the beautification committee's not gonna be out there looking for, you know, people breaking into houses, but basically, it's the same thing, is that they're going to be looking at things that are going on in their neighborhood, and what they can report to the city.
Okay. All right, well, go ahead and maybe see if I can summarize everything and rein this in, and see where, where we go from here. By the way, I, I swear you were looking at what I was writing here, because you just about said everything I was going to say. First of all, I mean, what I, I might like to suggest, based on what I heard here, is that we, we, each council member slash mayor appoint one citizen and strike from their district. So just say, one citizen to the committee, it could be anywhere. I mean, I, I would hate to have to have someone from a district get appointed, because we need the district, and we have a much more qualified person who's in someone else's district. So that's just opinion I would have. I would agree, again, with the comment. We're only talking, I mean, we're a quarter of the way through the year. We're only talking actually five meetings, probably, if you go every two months. I did the math, just like you, we're talking no more than twelve hours. If we allocated, you know, a hundred dollars for meeting, we're talking a thousand dollars worth of overtime, or twelve hundred dollars, or however you wanna look at it. I, I, I don't lose a lot of heartburn on that. I mean, it's not a significant amount of money. And I might suggest that we run this program through December thirty-first, and then we reevaluate it and see how it's, it's, it's working. I might suggest that we also come up with a little bit more by way of framework, and kind of a, I don't wanna say bylaws, but guiding principles. Because at the end of the day, what this committee is doing is making suggestions and recommendations. Because as a reminder, code enforcement is involved with way more things than just blight-related activities. You know, they, they might be dealing with other things that the citizens don't see. So I, I, I want this to be, they provide suggestions and recommendations. By the way, I think, I think, I think the committee is, is a right direction. I think it's an avenue that we need to give the public. But I don't wanna oversell it to where, if you come to the meeting, it's just one-hundred percent we're gonna do it. Not that we won't do it, it's just if we have a higher priority from the police chief as far as something going on related to the code enforcement person, then we need to address that first. And, and, and so I don't wanna, I don't wanna oversell it, that, that this group has the ultimate authority, because it still needs to come back to what's the most important. And, and by that, I mean, I mean, you may be, an example where you're dealing with, you know, something going wrong with a structure or something, where we have, you know, drugs or something that we're dealing with, and we, we've gotta get rid of that criminal element and what's going on first, so. So I, might I suggest that if the council's in, in agreement, you know, we scale it back to maybe, and if Councilmember Condit's okay with this, you know, we, we go with five citizens. We, we, they're gonna meet every couple of year. I have no problem authorizing overtime, but if, if the council doesn't want to, I think it's a great suggestion about, you know, on that one day, asking for the individual to adjust their, their work hours to, to cover that, you know, evening meeting that might be there. And then, then we revisit it around the thirty-first of December, or somewhere around there, and, and see how it's working. And in, in between there, maybe you bring back to us some kind of a, you know, framework that gives a little bit more, you know, structure to what we're looking for. So that would be my suggestion. Councilmember Condit?
Yes, I would absolutely be in support of that suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Everybody else all right with that?
We're good.
Okay. I give you the direction you need?
A couple of questions of structure. With that kind of timeframe, I heard the Measure H, as an example, Measure H is a formal committee recognized by this council, which means it's adopted by the municipal code as an ordinance. It has bylaws, structure, and all that. What I'm understanding from you would be more the ad hoc committee structure. It's important for reporting and how we fill the committee appointments as well, to design, you know, to distinguish between those two. One's a much more formal structure, one's more interim, I just wanna make sure from, we've got Brown Act and other issues, just to make sure, I'm understanding what the council's looking for. As you described it, for an eight-month period of time, it's more likely to be ad hoc. City Attorney might wanna weigh in on that.
Councilmember Klein, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna feed off what, what the city manager said. I mean, for right now, with trying to get this thing established, and, and, and all of us in agreement, if we had a more of an ad hoc committee, where we're not spending a lot of time with bylaws and, and things like that, to get it started, because you don't know what's gonna develop. And, and I think this is a step in the right direction of what, you know, Councilmember Condit had in mind, that if we had it sort of an ad hoc committee to get it going, and then come, come December, when they reported back, if we wanted more of a formal, formal committee, we'll have a little bit more of a structure, a plan, and an agenda of where we're gonna go with it.
So you're not adverse to ultimately going there, but you would like to start it a little lesser?
Right.
Okay.
And, 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 and that way, you know, from what I've asked Councilmember Condit for, you know, a little bit more of a structure and an agenda, but at least we're getting the committee started, so he can, you know, so it can be developed at the same time the committee's going.
Sure. Okay, Councilmember Condit?
And I'm absolutely open to that suggestion. My only mandate would be that code enforcement is involved, that way that there is that response. So that's it. But yes, I'm absolutely open to that.
And I, I don't think any one of us up here disagreed with code enforcement not being in there. I was just asking for direction, whether you wanted the, the, the code enforcement, lack of better words, low man on totem pole?
Sure.
Or a supervisor, or there. That was the only direction I was going, because there was nobody up here that disagreed that code enforcement shouldn't be involved.
All right, thank you.
I give you the direction you need?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Vice Mayor Rhino?
I would ask for a closed session at the next meeting of March the twenty-fifth to discuss the personnel matter.
Okay. Is the council good with that, or does anyone want more definition?
Or? I'm fine. I'm good.
What's the definition?
I would refer that to the city attorney.
Doesn't matter, you've got three people that are already good for it, so. Okay, we'll go ahead and set that. Anyone else? Okay, reports, we'll move to reports. I have, oh, yes, I do have something. I was contacted this afternoon by Virginia Baduino, who, as all of you maybe remember, is pretty heavily involved with the H train. And she had communicated to me that the feedback coming from the governor's office in light of, obviously, the high-speed rail no longer being a priority. And these were her words. The governor has indicated that the H train will be the priority for the mass transit for Northern California. And to that end, you know, they wanna, there's going to be other funding mechanisms that are going to open up. And to that end, one of the things that they would like to do would be, to an extent, an inv- would be, to an extent, an invitation to the Series City Council and the Planning Commission to explore and take the ACE train over to ultimately the San Jose Airport, and to ask any questions that we have, because they see this as a, a big step forward for not only our community, but for Modesto and Turlock. And so, she had thrown out some dates, and was encouraging us to, to show a strong support for it, so I told her that I would let the council know, they would like to do this sometime in the first part of April, so the dates that she had thrown out would be the first, the fifth, the eighth, ninth, or twelfth. And so maybe Mr. Wells, or Diane, you could email us and, and get a consensus, I understand that it's probably not gonna be one day that works for everybody, but if we could get as many as possible. She indicated it'll probably be a full-day event, because the train leaves here in the morning, and then only returns in the afternoon, but, but I think it's an exciting time for us, knowing that we are going to be embarking on the safety improvements, I believe, in the downtown area this year, Mr. Wells, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then hopefully shortly after that, the, the platform construction and other things that, that the ACE train would be undertaking. And so, to that end, that would be one thing that I would say, be on the lookout for, your email, one's gonna come out, and we'll see if we can come up with a date that works, and then I would communicate that back to, to Virginia. So, that's all I had to report, so with that, I will move to Councilmember Klein.
Well, and I apologize, I didn't write it down, but I read an article a couple days ago, that our, our own Series librarian won an award for literacy, literacy, I think it was, that with how she engaged in the youth, and the, and the, and the types of classes, and, and things they had for the, the youth of the city of Series, and I do apologize, not knowing exactly what it is, I was sort of hoping that, you know, she shows up once in a while, and, and at the council meetings, but, you know, I wanted to congratulate her on the award that they gave out, I believe it was last week, so...
Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
I just wanted to touch on the ACE train. Four or five years ago, we were invited to ride the ACE train over to San Francisco, the football, right? The football thing, and I went along on that ride, and I have to say that that was the first time that I rode the ACE train, and it's really different than Amtrak, I mean...
That's what she mentioned.
It was, it was just, I like Amtrak, I like to travel by rail, but the ACE train, they, you know, they take a different rail, so you're seeing all this different scenery, but it was just so easy, and, and it was clean, and it was just, it was just really nice. I took it from Manteca, which was, once I found it was a real easy place to get on, but I, I hope the dates work, I'd like to do it again.
Okay. Councilwoman Dorosit?
No.
Councilwoman Condit?
Just to piggyback off Councilmember Klein, is there opportunity where we can honor the librarian here at a council meeting for her award, or would that be appropriate?
It would be, I know she comes and speaks once, once a quarter.
Yeah, maybe we can give her a certificate or something like that, and...
Wells, can you make sure that we do that when she comes back?
And also reading the Courier, I noticed we had a couple boxing champions, national champs, the Flores Brothers, maybe we can also recognize them as well, maybe same meaning or something?
Well, along those lines, I had a citizen hit me up and say, maybe we should be recognizing Jaquan Gardner as well.
Oh, yeah, well, sure, all we could, there's a lot of, a lot of people recognized from Series, so that's good.
And I've heard, I've heard he's a very, you know, outstanding gentleman, so...
He is.
You know, congratulation on his, his success, so.
With that, Ms. Dean? Mr. Holland? Okay. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned earlier this evening, the Centennial Committee continues to meet nearing the wrap-up of the committee's efforts. Tomorrow's meeting at five PM, kind of getting the final touches on the Centennial Monument, which will be the bricks, there's still a little bit more time, but we'll be wrapping that up likely after tomorrow's meeting, the direction from the committee to move forward and get started on the construction of the Centennial Monument, which will be here on the corner of Magnolia and Fourth. The, a couple other items coming up on your calendars for the council, the swearing-in of the two new firefighters will occur this Friday, I'm sorry, this Thursday, three fourteen, at six-thirty PM, that will be in Fire Station One, or Fire Station Fifteen, depending on your numbering system, but right here at City Hall. And then the Police Department will have a swearing-in and award ceremony scheduled next Thursday, following Thursday, the twenty-first, at five-thirty here in the Community Center.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook? Padilla? Mr. Smith?
Well, Toby just did mine for me, so, the other thing I'd like to just say is that just to congratulate Captain Collins for being the next chief of police here as I get ready to retire.
Okay. With that, Mr. Collins?
Just wanted to thank Mr. Wells for the appointment, and all of you for your vote of confidence, I'm really excited about the opportunity. Thank you.
Rich, I see you're, Mr. Wise is not here, so I'm assuming you're filling in?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Wells, for the update on the swearing-in, again. I am here for Chief Wise tonight, just wanted to give everybody an update on where he was, he should be traveling home, actually, I just got a text, he just made it home safely from Seattle, Washington, he was participating in a Leukemia and Lymphoma Society fundraiser, I have a brief description of what that is here. The Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Stair Climb is the world's largest on-air stair climb competition, an annual fundraiser held at the tallest building in town, the Columbia Center. All two thousand participants are career volunteer firefighters who will climb up the second tallest skyscraper west of the Mississippi, and full turnout gear weighing over fifty pounds while breathing air from the SEBA. Throughout the sixty-nine flights of stairs, one thousand three hundred and fifty-six steps, and seven hundred eighty-eight feet of vertical elevation gained, we all remember that every step forward is representative of moving closer to a cure. Although this is an extreme test of physical endurance, it pales in comparison to what blood cancer patients endure. All proceeds raised directly benefit the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and since its inception in nineteen ninety-one, this event has raised over seventeen million dollars thus far. So Chief Wise was participating with other local firefighters from the area in this event.
Thank you. Thank you. Bettina? Nothing? Matt? Steve?
I followed up.
What's that?
You followed up.
Okay. I think I see Jeremy back there, he's hiding, no, okay. Supervisor Di Martini?
Nothing, nightmare.
Nothing, okay. I don't think I'm, hopefully I didn't miss anyone, so at this time, do we have a closed session, or no?
We do, we have a brief closed session.
Okay, we will move to closed session, a conference with legal counsel. Following that, we will adjourn to our next meeting, which will be held Monday, March twenty-fifth, at six PM, so thank you.